All right. Good evening. I'd like to call this committee the whole meeting for June twenty second, twenty twenty one to order. Before we get started, I think the Mayor Zahera would like to say something.
Thank you Chair Deputy Mayor Sorensen. Today unfortunately, we're not able to meet together, but I do want to say a fond farewell to Kayla Sedorick, who will be leaving us tonight's her last meeting. Kayla has been instrumental in the town of Edson over the last number of years. She really has been the glue that kind of held things together, especially during our transition period, really helping out both council and administration move things forward and we're very sad to see Kayla go as our executive assistant, but she's moving on to some pretty awesome opportunities in Southern Alberta. So Kayla, I know that you're going to soar like an eagle and I look forward to hopefully working with you in the future again as you move on and grow your career in municipal work. And thank you very much for everything that you've done for the town of Edson over the last several years. And I think council would like to say that we wish we were all together today because we probably would give you all a big hug. So thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, moving on. Thank you very much, Kayla. Moving on, can I get a motion that the agenda for the June twenty second, twenty twenty one committee, the whole meeting be adopted as presented? Council Schonard makes that motion. All in favor? Motion passed. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the June eighth, twenty twenty one committee, the whole meeting be adopted as presented? Counselor Wilkinson makes that motion. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor. Oh, Counselor Byer has a question.
Thanks. Through the chair to administration, following the financial report for information, is there going to be an in camera session on that as I believe we usually do? I didn't see it on the agenda.
Yeah, it's
We've already passed the
Yeah, it's already passed the agenda, but the it is during the delegation section, D one, there will be an in camera section right during at the end of that. All right. Any other questions regarding the minutes? All right, all in favor? Motion carried. Next up, we have delegation from town auditors. Hello, Ms. Bitner.
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor Sorensen. Yes, so we have tonight Shannon Barford from our auditors to go through our draft financial statements for twenty twenty. First, I'll put my hand up. I must apologize for not getting them to you sooner. Shannon had sent them to me last week and I had omitted to send them on to the agenda, so I do apologize for that. Also, the these are going to be draft financials. They won't be coming to you next week to pass. Just because we are still waiting for some of those figures from the Waste Management Authority. But I thought there was no reason to hold up at least the presentation from the auditor for the town's position as at the end of December. So usually you would see these come next week to get approved by council. We will bring them as soon as we get those figures from the other authority. Alright, so, oh, Counsel Wilkinson.
Through the chair, I just have a question. Have you heard any tentative date to get those draft financials? I did bring it up to Mr. Kriner at our meeting.
Through the chair to Counsel Wilkinson. We have been, I did reach out to them. They did say to me that I would need to, we had an extension until the end of, beginning of July. They've told me that I would need to at least get another extension till the end of July. So we've, we've approached municipal affairs for that. And so I can only let you know when, when I hear anything different than that.
Well, thank you very much for approaching them. Like, I just don't understand it.
Mayor Zahera.
Yeah, I agree. And I've also spoken to Mayor Michaels about this. Sharing our displeasure that we're waiting for them to get their stuff in order there so we can do our, our work. So I know that he was gonna look into it on his end as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, nothing further than that. I can, I think I'll hand it over to Ms. Shannon Barford to present the twenty twenty statements.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, council. It's a nice day to be inside in the air conditioning, I think. I don't have any at home, so I'm appreciating being in my office for a couple hours here. I believe you have a draft of the financial statement, so I am just going to share my screen here and put up a draft that I have. All right, so this is the financial statement and I have gone to page, it says page one at the bottom, which is the independent auditor's report. And so this audit report is where we give an opinion of the audit of the town of Edson for the December thirty one, twenty twenty year end. And so this first part of the, the report here is the opinion paragraph. And in this opinion paragraph, this is where we state that we have audited the financial statements and in our opinion, these financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the municipality and the consolidated results of its operations for the year. So this is a clean audit opinion, which is what you would like. And the rest of the audit report is basically what we have to do to get our audit opinion, the work that has to be done, the responsibilities of management with getting these financial statements prepared. And then the second page is our responsibilities as auditors. And so as Sarah has said, these are draft financial statements. We are waiting for the town of Hinton to get us some numbers for their, the West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority. So we can consolidate your share of the financial statements into these financial statements. And then once they're approved, they'll be finalized and we'll get them sent off to municipal affairs as soon as we can. So the next part of the financial statements, it says, page number three at the bottom, consolidated statement of financial position. This is the assets and liabilities of the municipality at December thirty first here. And what I'm going to do is basically highlight some of this information in graph format. So I have prepared some graphs here for you to see. So this graph is the financial assets of the municipality. And as you can see, most of the financial assets are cash investments, eighty six percent of the total, about thirty four million dollars is in cash and investments. There's about three percent that's in taxes receivable, ten percent that are in other receivables, which include amounts due from the county for some cost sharing. There's some grant receivables in there. There's some fine revenue receivables in there. And then the regular receivables for utilities and that type of stuff. And this little one percent loan receivable, that is the new amount that you had this year for the three hundred thousand dollar loan that was made to Community Futures. For them to provide loans for small businesses in the, in the area. So this is a picture of your financial assets, which represents the financial assets that were shown on that previous page there. The one thing I did want to go through were kind of the differences between your cash position this year and last year. So last year, your cash position was at about twenty four million dollars. And this year, it's just shy of thirty million. It's around twenty nine million dollars. So there's been an increase in the cash this year. And when we look at the changes in your receivables from this year to last year, you can see that your taxes receivable are down. So there's more collection on the receivables, less outstanding ones. Your other receivables are up. And this is just a function of the, the type of it. Most of it relates to having higher fine receivables and higher grant receivables. And then this loan receivable, that is the new Community Futures loan. So these were the kind of changes that happened in your financial assets for the year. The other part of the balance sheet or the statement of financial position shows the liabilities, which are debts owing of the town. So the total debt owing of about twenty three million dollars is comprised of basically these four types of debts. Payables would be short term amounts. So those would be like your utility bills, amounts due to, to people that were paid subsequent to year end. This deferred revenue money is money that you have received that you haven't used for a specific purpose yet. So there's four point nine million dollars of grant money that was received prior to year end. That is being held by the town, so it's in your cash balances and will be used in the future for specific projects as identified by you guys. Eight percent of that twenty three million dollars of debt is the landfill liability. So it is sitting at about one point eight million dollars. And then the majority of your long term debt is debentures and capital leases for the purchase of capital projects type of thing. So these lease or these, this capital debt has gone down about three hundred thousand throughout the year. In this year, there was seven hundred thousand dollars of new debt acquired in the form of capital leases. And there was about a million dollars of capital debt payments. So your debentures go until about twenty thirty six. So that's the timeframe that they're extended out to at this point in time. The other part of your capital asset or your cap, or statement of financial position are your capital assets. So I just kind of broke them out into what type of capital assets that you have. So majority of them are engineered structures, which are road and underground utilities. Nine percent in buildings, ten percent in leasehold improvements, which are like parks and fencing and that type of stuff, nine percent in land, a little bit in vehicles, and then eight percent in machinery and equipment. So this is the book value or the depreciated value of your capital assets. And your total capital assets were just shy of a hundred and thirteen million dollars at December thirty first. The other part, the bottom part of the statement of financial position is the accumulated surplus. And so the accumulated surplus is made up of three parts. This is your investment in capital assets, which represents the majority of it. You have seventeen percent of your accumulated surplus is in capital reserves and three percent of that surplus is in operating reserves. So your total capital reserves, total reserves were about twenty four million dollars for twenty twenty and they were about twenty million dollars in twenty nineteen. I just did a little sheet to basically compare what your total reserves were, so the red lines with what your cash and investment total was. And so it's basically showing that you have cash in the bank to fund the money that you have set aside for reserves. So reserves are funds set aside for a specific purpose, whether it be capital or operating purposes. So that is in pictures what this sheet represents. So these numbers here are your financial assets. These number here's where your liabilities, so your payables and your debt. You were in a net financial asset position of eleven point six million dollars, meaning you had assets in excess of debt at December thirty first of that amount. And then your non-financial assets are a hundred and thirteen million dollars and it's comprised mostly of the depreciated value of your capital assets. So your total accumulated surplus is a hundred and twenty five thousand, or a hundred and twenty five million dollars, which is made up of the, the reserves and the equity and tangible capital assets as, as I showed on that last kind of pie chart. So this is a good financial position. You have cash in the bank, you have assets in excess of your liabilities and you do have surplus in the end, some of it which is in reserves, which is basically savings for, for future. Were there any questions on the statement of financial position? Alright, so I'm going to move on to the next sheet, which is the statement of operations. So these are the revenues and the expenses of the town for the year. And you can see that your revenues and expenses here are compared to two thousand and nineteen and compared to the two thousand and budget. Now, these budget numbers that are in this financial statements are the emergency budget that was approved in, I believe it was April, but I might be a little bit off there. And so these are not the original ones that would have been passed like in, at the end of two thousand and nineteen or early twenty twenty, but it is the emergency budget numbers. So you can see that your, your revenues were very close actually to what was budgeted as were your expenses and your excess of revenues over expenses was also very similar to what you had budgeted. This government capital transfers is monies for capital projects. And so in the budget, there was some amounts budgeted that weren't completely finished. The majority of it being, there was about two point five million dollars budgeted for the multiplex in twenty twenty and there was not very much spent on it in twenty twenty in the capital projects. This contributed capital asset is the bike park that's out at Wilmer Park. So this is the value of the asset that was contributed to the town. So it shows as a revenue and in addition to your capital assets for the year. So I also have some pictures of these ones. So when we're looking at your revenues by object or by type of expenses, your government transfers, you can see they were slightly higher than budget and last year. So in the government transfers this year, these are government grants and contributions from the county. And there was an increase this year because there was an eight hundred thousand dollar most grant that was received and recognized in this year that wasn't in the budget numbers. User fees and sales, it is less than budgeted and just slightly higher than last year. So in the budget, there was some amount for land sales, which didn't happen, which is the reason for the decrease. And the increase from prior year is because of the recycling fee that was brought in in twenty twenty. And so it represented an increase there. The other types of revenues, investment income is obviously significantly less than what was budgeted and in prior year. This is just a function of what rates have, have done over the last little bit. Your fine revenue is higher than what was a budgeted and prior year. And so your fines, a lot of this is the photo radar amount is higher than, than what it was last year. Franchise fees has stayed very similar and rental income, this hasn't changed a whole lot, but most of the decrease is the rental of the the arena is the reason for this decrease. When we move on to your expenses, when we're looking at them by the different departments, you can see that administration expenses have stayed fairly consistent with last year and with budget. Protective services amounts are higher than what they were last year. And this is in correlation to the photo radar. When there's higher revenues, there's also higher costs associated with that. So that's a lot of what this increase is in here. Roads are down from last year. And so this decrease is last year, there was some buried cable work that wasn't similar work being done this year. And there was some capital projects that were put through operations because they didn't meet the criteria to be a capital asset. So they were budgeted through capital and then they actually ended up running through the operating budget. Recreation, you can see the difference between last year and this year in budget. So very close to what was budgeted, but down from last year. A, a big function of, of COVID. Legislative, legislative expenses, down from budget, down from last year. A significant portion of this is because of the decreased travel expenses. And there was also a bit of a decrease in councillors' honorariums. Public health costs, those stayed very similar to what was budgeted and actual planning costs went up. But they weren't significant increases here and culture costs. There wasn't significant changes in those amounts either. A little bit down from budget, but very comparable to what they were last year. So this is when we look at expend, expenses by department, but we also like to look at expenses by groupings or type of expense. So purchases from other governments, this is basically the policing costs and these stayed very similar to last year and to budget. Materials are up from what was budgeted, but they are down from last year. And when I look at those numbers, this is the, when we were talking, when I talked about the capital amounts being expensed in operating, this is the reason for their increase. So those projects that were budgeted through capital ended up not meeting the criteria of being a capital project and were expensed through operating, which is the reason for the difference between actual and budget. Transfers to others is very similar. And salaries, you can see, are very similar to what was budgeted down from prior year because of the changes that you guys made in your staffing in twenty twenty. Contracted services are up from budget and this would be mostly because of the photo radar contracting costs. And also because of the wastewater treatment outflow work that had to be done unexpectedly, so it wasn't budgeted for. And down from last year because last year there was significant costs associated with funding the landfill liability and the landfill. Amortization, so this is the depreciation on your capital assets. So it is very similar to what it was last year and what was budgeted for it. So that, that's kind of a summary of what these revenues and expenses are and the changes from budget and from two thousand and nineteen. You ended up with an excess of revenues over expenses of four point three million dollars. Budgeted six point nine. Last year it was about a million. Most of this four three point three million dollars, there was three point one million dollars spent on capital assets. And there was also four hundred, that, four hundred, four million dollars, sorry, that was put towards your reserves for the year. So that is kind of in a nutshell, your financial statements. I wasn't going to go through a whole lot of the rest of the notes and other schedules unless council had any, any questions for me about these financial statements.
Right, open up to comments or questions. Shannon, can you stop the screen sharing? Mayor Zahera.
Thank you Sharon for the, or Shannon for the update and the very in-depth presentation. Really appreciate it. So is that four point three million that you discussed, is that our quote unquote surplus for the year?
Yes, that's your surplus for the year.
I have a quick question, maybe it's to Ms. Bitner. Can you fill me in why utilities is twenty, almost twenty percent over budget for expenses? Is that any, any thoughts on that?
Yes, through the, through the chair to council. Just off the top of my head, I don't have that in front of me right now, but I know sometime within the year, we did come back and, and ask for some more money to be put back into the water and sewer. Contracted services. The budget you're seeing there is a budget that's passed in April. It doesn't include all of those things that we came back and, and did adjustments for throughout the year. So that, that, I think that's the reason why the utilities is, is looking over compared to it. I don't know if Shannon has any other notes on utilities to add?
Yeah, there was the five hundred thousand dollars that was for the, that wastewater treatment outflow. And then I think there was another hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and seventy five thousand in waste management. That was potentially approved in other board motions, but wasn't in the, it wasn't part of the original, or the original emergency budget.
Thank you. Any other mayor, Counsel Wilkinson?
Through the chair, it's just, it's a comment, but first off, Sarah, I'd really like to thank you. You obviously keep our books up pretty well. We have a surplus. I like that. And Shannon, how nice to have you again. It's always so reassuring to see you and to know that we're still floating. I love that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mayor Zahera.
Yeah, I guess just a comment. When people look at the numbers, they're gonna say, oh, my goodness, the town of Edson's swimming in cash, but the the reality of the situation is, is we're putting money aside for the multiplex and the, the big portion of that money is going to reserve for a capital project such as that. So while may look like we're flush this year, this is for future planning purposes as well. And that's, and I, and I have to give hats off to administration for really keeping a tight belt on expenses. Last year, we, we certainly had a number of sacrifices we had to make. But this has strengthened our position moving forward into recovery from COVID nineteen. And I'm very proud of the work that administration and council did throughout last year to, to put us in this position.
Counselor Curry.
Through the chair, I'm not sure if it's to Sarah or Shannon. Would there be much expectation to change to this, what we currently got, once we get the numbers and books, official numbers from the regional waste management?
Sure, I'll, I'll let you take that one, Shannon.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. When I'm looking at it, what the, the changes would be is there's some revenue and expenses of the, the capital assets that get included into your financial statements. And so last year, when I'm looking, there was about five hundred thousand dollars of income that was shown in your financial statements. And if I, I'm not mistaken, I think the expenses were very close to there. They usually show a little bit of a surplus or a deficit, but it's not usually a large amount. So it will increase your revenues by five hundred thousand. It'll probably increase your expenses by like three to five hundred thousand dollars. But your bottom surplus probably won't change by a whole lot. There could also be some changes to the reserve numbers because usually they fund their reserves for their future capital projects as well. So there will probably be some increases in reserves, increases in your capital assets, but I wouldn't expect to see a significant change to what the surplus that's presented here is.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Schonard.
Hi, thanks to actually both you Shannon and Sarah. My question is the four point three that we're calling surplus. That'd be probably somewhat equal to our revenue sharing from the Yellowhead County. So it's not really a surplus. We've taken money and like the mayor said, we're moving it over for saving for major project. Would I be correct in saying that? Four point three is about right?
I would, I would agree that you have moved about four billion dollars of money into reserves, net into reserves this year. So basically that surplus has gone into reserves and your reserves are designated for future capital and operating purposes.
Anyone else? All right, we'll be moving into an in camera session for reasons of section twenty four one. Can I get a motion to move into in camera? Counselor Curry makes that motion. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? So moved. We'll see you in camera. The motion to come out of in camera at seven forty four is made by Mayor Zahera. Welcome back, everyone. We're moving on to reports from staff. Nothing from executive office infrastructure, moving on to corporate services, Community Futures, West Yellowheads and their grant program. Go ahead, Ms. Bitner.
Thank you, Counsel Sorensen. My iPad just totally died, so Taylor to the rescue has given me hers. We have a present, a short presentation from administration to introduce the concept of the a, a, a grant program between Town of Edson and Community Futures. Similar to the, to the line one that we have. So I'll just share my screen here. Hopefully. So hopefully that is now showing up the correct way. So this an overview, if you remember in 2020, we implemented a loan program through Community Futures using 300,000 from the COVID relief. To date, only one loan has actually been applied for and approved from that loan program. So administration looked at the possibility of reallocating a portion of that loan program into a grant program. And for example, in 170 to the grant program, leaving approximately 100 still available with the loan program. So sort of splitting it between the two as a as a possibility. For this grant program, council would can set certain criteria for businesses to be able to apply for this grant program. Such as things, obviously, the grant amount per business would need to be decided by council. There could be criteria like certain types of businesses if council would prefer to narrow it down to a certain industries. Could be businesses just experiencing any drastic change due to COVID. You could have a gross annual revenue ceiling for the businesses. You could consider their viability based on financial statements, if you wish, to have those. Put forward. Businesses that may have been operating before March 2020. So COVID has actually affected the business that was there beforehand. Possibly rather than businesses that started during COVID. We could set a time limit like we did with the loan program that is going until I think March 2023. We could also set a time limit for this grant program as well. Obviously, I think located within Town of Edson boundaries and with with a valid business license would be something there. Also set eligible and ineligible expenses for the grant as well. So it's just a a sort of a varied mix of things that that could be part of the criteria for council to set for this program. Looking at the eligible and eligible expenses part of that, these are obviously just some examples. That we've put down. So for eligible, you know, obviously COVID related expenses to continue operating, for example, the patios. We could look at the at expenses like that as as being being able to even accept retroactively, things like that. Maybe innovations to increase the revenue streams with online platforms, website, expanding business models, any expenses related to that. And maybe even improving the viability of the business in the coming years. Ineligible expenses would need to be, I think, look at as well, things like salaries, rent and mortgage payments. Basically, it's really expenses that would already be covered by other programs that they can access relating to COVID. So other federal programs, even the government of Alberta programs. And maybe or and costs that may already be covered by our own incentives as well. So there's some examples of possible eligible or ineligible expenses that we could link to the the grant allocation as well. For the administration of the program. Community Futures would handle the administration and adjudication based on the criteria set by this council. So they would obviously look at that based on those criteria. They have a portal. Where they run their programs through. At the moment, our loan program is through that as well. So this could be run through that same portal in conjunction with that. Looking at the grants would need to be a come first come, first served basis. There'd only be a limited amount of of money available based on the amount that that council might wish to switch over from the loan program. There are some costs for community futures. There's a $750 fee for the use of the portal. And there are some fees per application as well. So just looking at the next steps from from this discussion. First of all, I the most important one is is this a program council would like to implement? I think would be a the first discussion. If so, we would need to set up that business eligibility criteria and eligible and ineligible expenses decided upon as well. Decide on that amount to transfer from the loan to the grant program. Once it all done, it can then be brought before council for approval. And we would work with Community Futures to get the application process finalized as well. So that's that's just a short presentation there for. Any questions on that presentation if I need to sit back and forth before I close it down?
I can't quote. Well, okay. Not sure. Hopefully I can see everyone's hands if they raise their hands. Any questions or concerns for Ms. Better?
Okay, I'll close that down.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Here we go.
Excellent.
So we have, we do have Nancy here as well to answer some of those questions that I may not be able to answer. Based on her experience with 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 doing this with another municipality.
Welcome, Nancy. Perhaps Nancy, you can just maybe you can just give an overview of the. The issues you found in finding people to apply. Maybe there's a certain type of. Of business that we're missing or or maybe we're just one of our criteria is too strict or something. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. First want to recognize that I am in Grand Cash tonight, so I'm on Treaty Eight lands and so welcome. I'm happy to join you and see that everybody's healthy and safe. I we just opened today, actually, with the town of Hinton in our loan portal. So we've ramped up the marketing and it was a bit of a long process. But the town of Hinton has gone ahead with a $750 amount per business. It's based on first come, first served. And we had a big board discussion as councillor Curry could probably attest to that. You know, this is really a decision that needs to go to our board of directors should council decide that they wish to pursue this program. So the plan is for us to do that this week, if that's what you decide. I I think the climate of what we're working in right now in terms of our businesses is that loans are really not something that they're looking for. I think we need to acknowledge that we've decided that our loan program that we worked on maybe 12 this time last year when we met. Was going to be a three-year program and I think leaving part of the funds for that. Would be a good decision for council to make simply because we don't know what the next two years is going to bring. We don't know how difficult the road of recovery is going to be and we don't need know what kind of cash that businesses are going to need access to make sure that they. Have the funds available to start up or even to expand their business should they need it. There has been a tremendous amount of work done by both our federal and provincial counterparts in terms of grants and loans. And we have heard very loud and clear from our businesses that they don't want any more loans. They would like grants. However, with that being said, we understand that every municipality that we work with has an economic development plan. And these are opportunities for us to look at what the business community as a whole may need. Whether that fits with your strategic plan of what economic development looks like in your community. These are funds that you've put aside for recovery. And really, it is the will of council to direct us as Community Futures West shallow head, how you see fit moving forward over the next two years, what you would like to see. I've worked with your CAO and Ms. Bidner on the information that was presented tonight. On a grant program, it is something that has been recommended for you to move forward on. And so our loan portal is a great tool to make things happen very quickly and very efficiently. And so. Our goal is to just make it as easy as possible for both our councils that we work with. And for our businesses to access funds as quickly and efficiently as possible. And we know that we have the team to do that. So you can rest assured that should you go ahead with this decision tonight. We will represent your best interests at heart and do it to the best of our ability. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. We're going to councillor Curry and then councillor Sharnard.
Thank you, Sarah and Nancy. I I guess we'll just speak in support of this. This is conversation and being a part of the Community Futures Board, just seeing what Hinton has been doing. And just definitely with our loan and even Edson as a whole. I do think our loan could could see more action in the next couple of years, but even as a whole with the. Federal funds, we didn't see a lot of uptake on them comparatively in the region in Edson. So it has really been shown that that's not a necessity. So Nancy and I had discussed this, you know, before when this came up and that. Just being uncomfortable that that money is sitting there and meant to be used to help our businesses. That is what council has put it there for. And it is a big chunk of money that's not being utilized right now. And I agree with her even myself. I've had multiple businesses approach, asking if there's any grant programs. And quite a few people have reached out to that loan program, thinking it was a grant program and then found out it was a loan program. So I do think that this is a way for us to really truly support. And I think throughout, we've had a lot of conversations about our tax reductions and our utility credits. But often we're not hitting the specific people that need it. And I know for me, that's been a concern for me because some of those things have hit people that needed it. But it's also hit people who have actually profited during the pandemic. And I think this grant program allows us to hit the specific people who need it because they are accessing it. And I think my only other add to that would be is I definitely would like to see a higher amount than 750. I think if we're going to do it, I would like it to be our criteria to be people that really need it, but definitely a more substantial amount that can have more benefit to a business.
Councillor Sharnard.
Hi, thanks, Nancy. I'm not sure if this question would go through to you. Because we're talking taxpayers' dollars, I don't like I'm not really in favor of grants. And I believe the loans right now we charge interest on, I would be more in favor if we could help. Some of the businesses that are really in need, even if necessary, interest-free loans. So it's similar to a grant. But because it's taxpayers' dollars, they have to pay it back. So, you know, if a typical loan says you got to pay it back in three years, maybe give them five years to pay it. And even interest-free to help the struggling ones out because it is taxpayers' dollars. And if it's a grant. And I agree with councillor Curry, if you give him $750, that doesn't do anything. But if we can help them out with a loan, meaning we will recover the tax dollars, some of them may need 25, 30,000 to get kickstarted again. Because a lot of the businesses I talk to, yes, you know, we're starting up, they're excited, they're running into struggles, they have to find staff. So therefore, doing staff, some of them are sending out incentives, you know, $500, $1,000 signing bonuses. So I would like to help them that way, but bear in mind it's tax, it's taxpayers' money we're spending. So that's just my comment.
Anyone else? Councillor Byer and then councillor Wilkinson.
Thanks through Deputy Mayor Sorensen to, I think, Ms. Robbins. When you issue a loan, it would be my understanding that there'd be some type of, if maybe if they're not making payments, that they would have to. Talk to you and maybe get some business coaching or find out what's going on. With the distribution of a grant program, is there any requirement to 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 say how they use the money or if it benefits them? Or how how good or bad it is? I guess if they're using it for the right reasons, is there anything to kind of? Let us know that it's used in the right manner?
To councillor Byer through the chair. To to really, that is determined by council. So you would set the criteria that would make a business eligible for this grant. And we would judge the application based on your criteria. Now, understand with the grant. That we are just issuing funds and there's no requirement for the business to do any kind of follow-up with us. But however, if it would really becomes down to your choice, if you wish to add that. You know, we can add that. However, understand that the nature of how the Community Futures program works, the minute that we have a contact with our business, they go into our database. They become then and we consider them an active client, no matter what the circumstances are. And they would be included in our client contacts and we would try to our best to reach out to those clients and and ensure that they understand what our services are. And what they can access for no cost to us. So it wouldn't be required. But we would highly recommend to the businesses that they reach out to us.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Yes, thank you very much, Sarah and Nancy. And this would be to you, Nancy, I think. Just in talking, like I had notes here wondering why there was such a low uptake on the loan. But as you say, I guess probably people are worried they wouldn't be able to pay that back, like thinking that they won't be too successful. But you said there was one loan here in Edson. Is that true?
Yes, to councillor Wilkinson through the Wilkinson through the chair. Yes, that is correct. We've had one.
And you compared us to Hinton. Were there more loans given in Hinton?
We did not do a loan program in Hinton. The town of Edson was the only municipality we worked on with a loan program. So you're unique in that way.
All right. So if we did, if we did go just to have the grant rather than the loan. Is it possible to change this one loan into a grant or is it a total different amount of money that we're talking about between a loan and a grant?
Well, understand that when you did the grant or the loan program, I believe the criteria was up to $30,000.
Right, okay.
That is an awful lot of money to grant to a business that and they've signed a loan contract with us. So they are required to pay back those funds. That's why.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I I recommend.
We'd have to give them that grant money free, wouldn't they? That the person that got the loan or else we're almost punishing them for going for a loan. Unless we give them equal.
They would be eligible to apply for the grant program like every other business. I I think to understand that we have a lot of loan clients in Edson. And loans are a necessary part of becoming an entrepreneur. You need sometimes to borrow capital and you need to pay it back. We we treat this loan from the town of Edson dollars just like we treat every other loan that we have with our Edson clients. And I would recommend that you keep that the same.
Okay, not. Okay, I just think if I had got that loan and then a grant came up afterwards and I was still stuck in my loan, I wouldn't be too happy. And I also agree 750 is just not not worth the paper and the paperwork for that small amount. So that's my input. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Nancy.
Can I follow up with that? Yeah. So while there's one, I I want to clarify that while there's one Edson loan under this particular category. We probably have 30. We did 106 loans last year. So understand that we probably have 35 to 40 loan clients in Edson and we treat them all equally the same. So this loan would not be any different than any other loan that's in our portfolio. And we would not treat it any other differently. So.
Except that it came from Edson taxpayers' money, this loan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Zahara.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Sorensen. Thank you, Nancy and Sarah for the presentation. I've heard a lot of feedback from businesses, particularly restaurants, gyms, those that were closed for extended periods. That have really struggled, especially with the third wave, that retail outlets didn't have the same sort of restrictions and other businesses. So I'm I'm definitely in support of of moving some of these funds into a grant program. The the reason we set this all up was to support business and to provide them with that support. Last thing I want to see is more empty buildings in Edson. Because businesses just run out of the cash to pay their bills and some of them are really struggling. And unfortunately, from what I hear from some of these business owners is that even though there's grants available. From the federal and provincial governments, it's only covering only a portion of what they've lost. And so. You know, a gym, for example, shared with me that they can get a $10,000 grant. But when their rent is $10,000 a month and they're closed for three months, that doesn't really help them. And they have other additional expenses such as utilities, such as insurance costs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I I certainly see the need for a targeted program that I think would be. For places like restaurants, gyms, entertainment. Uh, for places like restaurants, gyms, um, entertainment outlets, bowling alleys, theaters. Places that ha- didn't really have a chance to open for the most part, um, especially in the third wave. Um, when we set this grant program up, I didn't think we were expecting another big mass shutdown like we did. Um, so, uh, and I, and I agree that seven hundred and fifty dollars is probably not enough. If we're gonna do it, we need to make sure it's significant enough that. Businesses feel like it, it will make a difference. Um. So, uh, I would be supportive of a higher amounts, uh, to a certain amount. Um, and I think. Covering things such as municipal expenses, like what is their, what are their utilities like? What is their municipal taxes like? And uh, to help cover some of those costs because they are taxpayers as well. And if they're not, if they don't survive, they're not gonna be able to pay taxes in the future. Um, so that's kind of my perspective on that. Um. And, and I think that the loan program is uh having a portion still there available for businesses in the future. I think is really important as well because someone may look at expanding later this year or next year, may need that capital, and that might be a good option for them. So. Uh, I'm in support of moving forward with something. Um, otherwise, um. We need to look at something else because I, I, I don't think it's fair to have that money sitting there not being used for what it was intended for.
Yeah, I'll provide a comment. Uh, when we set this up, I was really excited that we could someday transition this. Loan program into something that's not COVID-related, just. Uh, transition it into a economic development loan program. And uh, I, you know, I'm, I'm actually supporting Counselor Schonard's comments. I believe we should be expanding the uh, the interest-free, interest-free period of the loan and maybe the payback term of it. Making it longer and perhaps expanding its scope to non-COVID-related items. Um, I think we're coming out of the pandemic right now. I don't think um, people are gonna be spending a lot of money on barriers or. You know, all of that money has been, all of that transition has been spent, uh, done already for COVID. So uh, my, my, my preference would be to expand this beyond COVID. And if necessary, uh, more interest fee period and a longer payback period. Uh, just use it as an economic development program. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Curry, I think you had your hand up.
Um, I guess just some clarity, like the idea wasn't to take all the money out and put it into a grant. The idea was just to take a portion of the money out and leave a portion in for the loan to stay. Um. Uh, I guess if council's not okay with moving forward with a grant program, which. Um, I, I'm just pulling away because we did the utility credits and we did the tax, um, you know, we did. It's different for commercial, like we did these things that helped tons of people that didn't need it. Um, so now we're opposed to helping those specifically needed. And like, we can set that criteria to say, this can be from past expenses. You know, this can be things, you know, we can set that criteria. So I guess my question is. I'm not comfortable, and I think it's wrong of us to have that money sitting there when it's been over a year without it being utilized. So if we're not interested in using a portion of that for the grant, then what does council suggest we do? To support our economy and support our businesses moving forward? Because this is something that our businesses have repeatedly said that they need support in that actual cash asset. Um, because there is tons of different loans available. So. If are we pulling it back into our budget, what is our plan to utilize that? Because it is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of. Um, taxpayers and people's concerns about it being taxpayers' dollars, so was the utility credit. So was all that, all of those were taxpayers' dollars. So this is specifically for the businesses who have been hit the hardest. That's the only ones, we set the criteria of who can access that. So I guess my question to council is, what then do they recommend we do moving forward?
Counselor Byer.
Thanks, uh, through the Chair to, I think, uh, Ms. Robbins. Um, I, so I, I, I'm, I'm comfortable doing a part of this as a, as a um. A, a grant program, uh, maybe not as high as a hundred and seventy thousand. Um, but my question to you, Ms. Robbins, is um. If seven hundred and fifty dollars was maybe what I'm hearing around the table here, isn't really. A significant amount of money to make a difference in a business that would require a grant, what would be a significant amount of money? Um, that would help a business out? Like, is this like a thousand dollars? Is this five thousand dollars? Is this ten thousand dollars? What is, what is feasible? And? And if we were to set a criteria that it would help, um, you know, the, the restaurants that were closed down or, or gyms that were closed down. Um, how many of those do we have in our community and, and how, how, how far would that spread go?
Counselor Byer through the Chair, um. I think it, it really, to understand that I, if I was a business and I knew there was a grant program in my municipality. I would take advantage of it no matter how I could. So it really is the will of council, the amount that you. Present, present. For a small business, seven hundred and fifty dollars could be two days of wages or three days of wages. For a big business. It, it's a drop in the bucket. So it all depends on, on what really is the will of council. Some sectors in this pandemic have been hit harder than others. Um, if uh council chooses to be very direct in how they wish to allocate the funds. I imagine for our restaurant community, um, to be told uh by the government of Alberta, go out, build a patio, build it, it will come. And then to be closed within a week was a big hit for a lot of our uh food services. Um, and so that is something that we have noticed that is, it was a big initial cost that may take a time for it to come back. Um, but that is not to dismiss anything that any other industry is going through. Hair salons, soap proprietors, uh, oil and gas, like every industry has been hit hard. Um, but closures to businesses and the way that the up and down of that has taken a toll on many people. Both financially, uh, physically and mentally. And we need to recognize that those businesses that were probably closed and forced to close. Uh, repeatedly throughout this pandemic are probably the businesses that will need the help the most. I can't tell you how many businesses that are in Edson, I don't know. Um, and if you wish to move ahead, um, and give us direction to do a sector-based. Uh, grant program, uh, we can work together with administration to do that for you and do a little bit of research into different sectors. And how we could do that if that's what we would do. Um, it really is up to you what you would like. You know your community better than anybody, so. Um, give us some direction and we will build something for you.
Mayor Zahara.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'm not in favor of um, more loans. Um, I've heard loud and clear from those business owners that are impacted by COVID, that loans are not what they're looking for, that's not what they need. They don't need more debt, they need help paying the bills. Um, and as I said previously, um, last thing I want to see is more empty buildings uh in Edson, we have enough of those already. Um, so, um, some are gonna hurt more than others, some have been impacted differently. It depends. On, on the individual situations, uh, which is why. I kind of like looking after, say, things like municipal expenses because that's scalable upon the size of the business. And you could include hair salons in that as well, they've been impacted, but um. Uh, I think uh, a grant uh that would be available to them, not everybody's gonna utilize it. Um, but some, this could be whether or not they stay open, or whether or not they um are able to offer the services in the community. Um, I, I agree with Counselor Curry that having that money sitting there not being put to use um is not an appropriate thing either. I'm just trying to find a way that we can, we can provide that support. And ensure that uh these businesses that are struggling and have been struggling have the ability to survive. Um, just on that as well, I just would like to hear uh CEO Beveridge's perspective, if she has any thoughts or opinions.
Thank you, Ms. Ware. I was uh going to ask if I was able to speak at this moment. Um, administration has most definitely struggled with this um idea. Uh, we, we have went through. Um, you know, much of the same conversations that uh the council members uh each have expressed. Um, from the perspective of looking at trying to aid our business community. Um, in finding a way that is fair and equitable is something that we wanted to make sure that. Um, we allowed council the opportunity to explore what criteria works for this community. So. Each community has their own um challenges and. I think that, you know, I, I feel, I'm getting the sense that, you know, essentially that. Where, where we haven't quite brought enough um information to be able to allow for this to um. To be flushed out um in, in a way that we need to, in order to bring forward a decision at, at our next council meeting. So. Um, you know, it's something that I think that potentially we might have to bring back um for further discussion, just, you know, getting the sense that we're not. Quite, um, we, we brought this very general because essentially it is up to council, all of the criteria, and that's something we wanted to make very clear. Um, determining whether or not, I think, going back to the question, if this is something that council even wanted to. Implement at all is something I think that we would need to understand uh from the group at this time. In order to know if, if we wanted to spend more, more time on this or bring back something completely different. So. Um, that would be all my comments at this moment.
I'll just just uh provide one response. Um, I agree with Counselor Curry that uh with this money should be used, it shouldn't be sitting there. And I also agree with. Uh, Mayor Zahara, I've been saying it for months that uh businesses don't want more loans. I've been saying that for over a year now. However, I do know that the most of the restaurants and gyms and everything that was shut down man, by mandate. Have more than fifty thousand dollars of arrears right now. Uh, and a thousand dollar grant is not gonna do any good, it's not gonna keep them alive. So that, that is why I am recommending that, you know, a thirty thousand dollar interest-free loan would actually. For five years or whatever, could, could make them viable again. And uh pay off the creditors and, and get the creditors off their back. Uh, whereas a thousand dollar grant is not gonna, even a two thousand, five thousand dollar grant probably wouldn't help a restaurant or, or something that's got. That, that is looking at fifty thousand dollars of arrears or more. Um, Counselor Byer, you had your hand up?
Thanks, uh, through the Chair to um either administration or Ms. Robbins. Uh, so I am just trying to remember what Ms. Bittner had on her presentation regarding um. Uh, eligibility requirements. Uh, if, if someone had a, a grant, would they be required to provide receipts? Like, say they built a patio and it costs three thousand dollars. Um, and, you know, they had a few other expenses. Uh, is that something that they're required to show to get the grant? Or, or if we had it set up that, um, and, and I don't want to make it. Uh, too administratively overwhelming either, um, on, on that side. Um, or do they say, uh, if we choose a sector-based grant program, like say we targeted restaurants, um, or all the, all the ones that were shut down, the, uh, the repeatedly. Uh, by the government, um, if, if they just qualify within that, then they would be eligible for that grant, uh, whether or not they incurred any. Like over and above expenses, but maybe just had their regular expenses that just kept piling up. Um, is, is, are there two ways to do that? Or, or how, how do you, how does that work?
Uh, through, uh, through the Chair to Counselor Byer, uh, again, that those were things that we could set as, as part of the criteria. Um, uh, like I mentioned, we could, we, we, we could say that they, they could use retroactive expenses that they, you know, they might have used to build a patio that they ended up not being able to. To use, or um, we, 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 we could require financial statements, we could require receipts. Uh, it just depends on how we would set up that, that application process and then the, the criteria that, that council would like to um apply towards that. Um, I'll let Nancy uh speak up if there's anything sort of um, um, more than that, uh, from, from her experience that she's.
Uh, through the Chair to Ms. Bittner, I think you, you summed it up pretty good. Uh, it is really currently with the town of Hinton loan. We are asking people to submit what they're going to spend the money on, and they have to submit their financial statements. As well as an active town of Hinton business license, those, and they have to meet the eligibility requirements. So, um, it really is the will of council what you would wish to see. I do recommend the financial statements. It helps us to do the work to determine whether or not it's a viable business. Um, and that they're a legitimate business, so I would recommend that. Um, I also would recommend the town of Edson business license, as we do not want to be funding businesses outside of your area. And also they should have active business licenses because that's what you require in your community. The rest is really what you would like to see. I, I do, um, I'm kind of on the fence, to be honest, about the follow-up on whether or not they should report afterwards. What that does is increase the administrative side of administering a grant program. And for a small amount of money, there's really no reason why the business would do that. Um, and if they don't do it, really, what are we going to do? So, um, the easier it is to get the money quickly to the client, the better that everybody is, so.
Thank you. Counselor Schonard.
Hi, just a comment. I'm agreeing with Counselor Sorensen again. That's why. I'm not in favor of grants because these businesses, while I talk to them, they, you know, a thousand fifteen. You know, fifteen hundred bucks, they need like twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. So. Um, I agree, if we're not gonna use it, take it out, but I would ra- much rather see, because I want them to survive. I want them to be viable. So we could help them more in saying, okay, here's a twenty-five thousand dollar loan if they fit the criteria. Uh, giving them a break interest free, meaning they don't have to start paying money back for, for twenty-four months because. Giving them a thousand dollars does nothing. I agree with the mayor, if we do nothing to help them, i- it's an empty building. So I think offering the money up because we've gave people incentives to build a new business. So this would be an incentive to keep an existing business to survive. So here's twenty-five thousand, up to twenty-five and maybe more, depending on the business. And then say, okay, for the first two years till you're viable, you're expected to pay nothing back. And then we can. Do it on a sliding scale. I'm saying interest fee, and that would help them because. A grant, unless we're giving them ten or fifteen thousand dollars and a hundred and seventy, we're only helping a few. So. That's why I'm against grants, it's not enough money and more interest-free loans.
Counselor Byer.
Thanks, uh, through the Chair to Council and Administration. Um, I would be in favor of moving forward with a, a grant program. I, I firmly believe that our utilities rebates. Um, were kind of like grants. Um, and I would really like to target the businesses that require it. Um, and with that said, I would uh prefer that we directly allocate the funds to the sector-based grant program that would. Um, uh, only allow the businesses that were closed down repeatedly to be eligible to receive a grant. Um, I think seven hundred and fifty dollars is not um a significant amount of money, and I would prefer to see that minimum twenty-five hundred dollars, maybe. The upwards of five thousand dollars. Um, but I would probably want to see um or hear how many. Uh, businesses we actually have in Edson that would qualify if we chose to have it. Um, uh, just sector-based with the restaurants and gyms. I, I don't actually know how many businesses we have. Um, that would qualify. So knowing how many businesses that would qualify would maybe help um with that answer. Um, um, as, as well through the discussion, uh, the current loan, loan program that we have, I, I would be interested in seeing that um adjusted. Um, perhaps interest-free, um, and, and making some changes to it going forward as well, um, to help utilize. Um, the, uh, to help encourage more recipients on that end as well. So those are my thoughts.
Counselor Curry.
Um, Counselor Byer, I was actually thinking in the same ballpark as you, I was thinking the grants would be, you know, in that five thousand dollar range. Um, I have some serious concerns about the interest-free concept with that loan. Um, our town of Edson loan currently is better than any bank loan. Um, and I think if they, the provincial government and the federal government already offered loans. That were interest-free with paid within time, and I, I, I think it's, if that's, we want to look at that and we want to. Uh, allocate a different amount of money or a certain amount of money for that, that's fine. But I think realistically. Um, there's a very good chance that'll be a grant program. And by that, I mean, there's a very good chance they won't be paid back. Um, so I have concerns with those loans and making them that accessible to pay off current debt. Um, which possibly, um, those businesses should have been eligible. For the interest-free federal and provincial loans. So then if we're getting more money, I have, I just have. Huge concerns about what is that debt load that we're then, a business is taking on? And then is that just going to end up being a grant program, but it's thirty thousand versus five thousand? So I do have some serious concerns. So I do have some serious concerns with the amount of eligibility for loans that were available provincially and federally that included that 0%. And now we're adding that on and so, and to me then that eligibility would be. You, are we sticking with that, you couldn't access those ones? Because if you could have accessed those ones, we're talking more businesses being substantially in debt. And that's really hard to recover. So that's my concern with those.
Okay, by my count, we have two people against grants and three for grants. Counselor Wilkinson, can you just clarify your position, please?
I guess I can be a fence sitter because I really do agree with you, Counselor Sorensen, I think like a substantial $30,000 interest free loan, but I think like for five years. Because this recovery is not going to happen in one year or two years, they need a real long runway to recover. But we could have part of it given in grants as well, like if we've only had one person on the uptake of the loan. Even if we're offering a $30,000 loan, it's not going to break our 300,000 there, is it? You know, so maybe we can do part and parcel. And suit the needs of the individual businesses, because I mean, we have theaters, we have lots of people that were shut down that need help in some way. And I think the recovery will take a while, so we certainly couldn't charge interest on that all, that's for sure. Okay, that's my point.
Mayor Zahara, then I'll give a call.
Yeah, so if there isn't clear direction, I certainly would agree with CEO Beveridge to get further information, maybe we need to do a little bit of a survey with those businesses that are impacted. To see what would be most beneficial to them. You know, I don't know what their arrears look like, is it 50,000, is it 100,000, maybe it's only 10,000. And it's gonna be different from every business, so what would be more beneficial, would it be? Interest free five year loan program? Or would it be an initial $5,000 grant? Or do maybe they don't want the support, I don't know. Maybe they're already made the decision that they're not gonna move forward or businesses picked up and they think they're gonna be okay. But I just know from the feedback that I've heard loud and clear, there is no interest in loans and having to have just more things to pay back. That and the the feeling I get from from the businesses that I've talked to says it's only setting them up for future failure. But if they were able to get some sort of immediate support to help offset some of the costs such as throwing away the food that. Or some of the patio costs as well, there were significant dollars put towards that and then the. The rug out pulled under them. Some may choose to use that money to reinvest in their business, to do some work on their business or market or do those sorts of things, so. I'd be supportive with administration going and doing a bit of a survey, restaurants, gyms, the theater, the bars. We have a bowling alley that was shut down for an extended period of time. And maybe even we might want to include, you know, personal services like hair salons, they weren't, they were impacted. But maybe not as significantly, I'm not sure, but. And I think too, if I heard Ms. Robbins speak. You're gonna look at the viability of the business as well, so if they're not gonna be a viable business, they wouldn't be able to to get the grant if I'm understanding correctly, is that correct, Ms. Robbins?
To Mayor Zahara, yes, that is correct, financial statements help us determine where the business is going and where they've been and also what they've been doing under the pandemic, so I would recommend that be included.
Okay, I'll provide, it seems like there's four in support of some type of grant program, so. I did like the mayor's recommendation earlier of if we do a grant perhaps limited to. Municipal utilities and property taxes, I think I've heard that loud and clear from business owners that. The one of their biggest arrears is property taxes. Because that's the easy one not to pay at the end of the month when you're shut down. So I would be, if we are gonna go with the grant program, I think that would be the most useful. And I was gonna recommend a survey, but I was scared to say it because I know admin is already overworked. But if they're willing to do a survey, I think that would be very useful. Mayor Zahara and then CEO Beveridge.
Well, I would suggest that we do have a business liaison and I think that would be a perfect fit, I don't know how Ms. Robbins feels about that, but.
I would have to talk to CEO Beveridge and see where we go at the future and what that would look like. So I will not say yes or no. Because Ms. Kochs may have something to say about it tomorrow morning.
CEO Beveridge.
Deputy Mayor through to council as a whole, so what I'm hearing at this moment is that we. Take this back, do some research, we'll speak with Ms. Robbins on the side here. One of the things I just wanted to understand is of course the timelines and which we're under. Knowing that this has been a year where we've had the loan program. That has not been accessed in the way that we had anticipated and hoped. But that we wanted to make sure that we take our time to make sure that we bring something worthy of council's consideration, so. I think that, you know, based on conversations that I've had with Ms. Robbins. They have a board meeting on Thursday, I recall, and then then they are September, if I'm correct, that's the next board meeting. So I think, you know, if it's, if it's to councils, you know, understanding if this is a rush. But we also need board approval to make changes to the program from what I understand. But we'd be able to bring this back at some point once we've had an opportunity to further explore the options and bring back something back. That council can further provide direction on. And when we have information on the businesses and the impacts on this and also an amount that they feel would be. That would be of assistance, so, thank you.
Counselor Curry and then Ms. Robbins.
I was assuming that CEO Beveridge or Nancy would bring that up. Because it is just a priority and I think for the board, they just need to know that we're interested so that that approval, because I don't think we want to wait till. September for, to wait for that. The only thing I was gonna ask, and I don't, I don't remember, sorry Nancy, just with the presentation from Hinton's and that. I do believe that Hinton wasn't the first community, there was other communities that have done this or there was another for sure. Maybe when we're just bringing that information back admin, if we could just get a little more detail on what they did. Because theirs is already up and rolling, correct Nancy? Sorry.
Yes, Hinton was the first one that we did. That is not to say there are a plethora of examples in the province right now of. Any communities that have done this, it seems to be more common than not, actually.
Perfect, because I think that would be helpful for us. Just to see some that have already started rolled out and just to hear kind of. How that went in their communities too, if possible, sorry, just adding more. Thank you.
Did you have anything else to add, Ms. Robbins? You had your hand up, I think?
I just wanted to follow up on the survey idea. I'm. I do appreciate that you do want to ask businesses their opinion, but heading into the summer months, it's very difficult right now to talk to businesses. It may be a bigger process than you think it may be. And I think we've had plenty of opportunities to hear what businesses have wanted to say. And so I, I, in appreciation of the work and the changes in the past month with the town of Edson, I do want to. Maybe put some caution in there that we may be already, we may be duplicating what we already know. And we already know that. Businesses are stretched, they're trying their best to survive, they want to have a good summer. And any time that we can put cash in their pocket. We are helping them, whether that be from we shopping local or giving them a grant program or sending business their way. So I, I don't want to burden administration and have them do a survey where we know what the answer will already come about to, so I. I do respect that that you want to reach out to the businesses. But I did want to make that comment to avoid too much workload on administration, if I could, without the respect.
Counselor Brier.
Thanks, through the chair to council and administration, my thoughts also were, thanks, Ms. Robbins, that I personally don't think we need another survey, I think there's. Enough information at the table as well as. With with the guidance of our West Ellohead community futures and the surveys that they've done in the past and what they know businesses require. I don't need to hear another survey, but I would be comfortable if council was able to provide direction or enough of a consensus to move forward. If a grant program went towards the utilities or taxes, I'm, I'm indifferent, but if it helped garner more support, then I'm comfortable with that as well. I really think that if we can't come to consensus and this doesn't come back until September, that's my understanding. Then we're into the busy fall and pretty soon there's an election and this could be completely missed. And I don't want that to happen. I think there's too many businesses that are just on the edge and, and like I said before, between 2,500 and 5,000, I. I don't know what would be better, how we could get more businesses in there or how many businesses would fit in that criteria within our town, I don't know. But if there was a recommendation brought forward of either one of those, because we have a certain amount of businesses and that we could help. More than I could be in support of of moving forward with something. Thanks.
Mayor Zahara.
All right, thanks for everybody's feedback, I do, I do agree that we've already received a lot of feedback from businesses, either directly or indirectly. My recommendation would be to. Take the hundred and. $50,000 and put it towards a grant program up to $5,000 per business. To cover things such as municipal expenses for 2020, I guess it would be. And that. It's a first come, first served basis, once the money's gone, it's gone, maybe it won't have as much uptake as we think and. We can put more money into other programs later. And then also looking at converting our loan program into an interest free program. And seeing what that looks like as well. With only one business, then we can deal with that business to ensure that they also get the benefit of that. And I think that way we hit, we give different options and I think the loan program has to be targeted to those that were shut down that we discussed previously.
Mayor, can you clarify what you said, was it 100 or 150 or, I missed that?
150,000 for the grant program and then the rest will remain in the loan program.
Any thoughts? Counselor Brier.
Through the chair to Mayor Zahara, is your thoughts towards the grant program, is it a sector based grant program or just to any business in the town?
Nope, it would be sector based for those that were most adversely impacted.
Ms. Robbins and then Counselor Wilkinson.
I did want to clarify for council not to think of only one business taking advantage of this loan program as a failure. I do not view it that way, I view that this business was another business that we've helped support in the economy. And every business that we can help, it makes all the difference, so I, even though it was one business, I did want to clarify that comment at. It's still a success, that's, that's money that we would not have, that business would have had, not had otherwise, so.
Thank you. Counselor Wilkinson.
Through the chair, I'd just like to say that I support Mayor Zahara there, I think that's exactly right to put half of it into. Grants and then interest free loans and again, the person that got their own interest free for them too. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Kayla has her hand up.
Oh, Kayla does, okay, go ahead, Kayla.
My apologies through the chair, I do feel like this is coming to a close now, but I thought maybe Nancy could just clarify how much. Feedback that she needed for the board to go forward on the 24th. Because I do feel like we have a general consensus here that we can build off of and bring back a recommendation. At the next committee meeting, as long as Nancy just needs that general consensus, which I feel like we're at for the board, is that what I'm understanding, Nancy?
First of all, what are you gonna do without that girl? That's a whole other conversation, but yes, I think myself and Counselor Curry have enough to go on. For Thursday's meeting and I think between the two of us, thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Parsons, so. I think we're good.
All right, thank you very much, we'll move on. Thank you again, Ms. Robbins. Moving on, nothing for community services or information items, I don't believe we have any questions from the media, please interrupt me if we do. We have no. Go ahead.
No, we're good, we have nobody in attendance tonight.
Thank you. No closed meeting sessions, can I get a motion for a German? Counselor Shanard makes that motion. Any. You have to wait, you have to wait. All in favor. Motion carried, thank you very much, everyone.
Have a great night, everyone.